Good evening and welcome to the July 24, 2017 work session of the Mayor and City Council. We have one topic for discussion this evening, but before we get to it, just want to announce that next week's work session, right here, July 31, 7:30 PM will be a discussion of the city assumption of homeowners association stormwater facility maintenance responsibilities. And when I say that, just to be clear, we haven't decided to do that, it's deciding how we want to handle that. Next, I know we, it is our intention, our hope to conduct a closed executive session this evening. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Mayor and City Council see Gaithersburg conduct a closed executive session tonight, Monday, July 24, 2017, immediately following this scheduled session pursuant to the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland, section 3-305B4, to consider a matter that concerns the proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state. Topic to discuss is the potential for additional development at 14 Folks Corner Avenue and 16 South Summit Avenue.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries four zero. Alright, so now we will move on to our work session discussion topic. We have our Director of Economic Development, Tom Lottigan, and our Housing and Community Development Chief, Louise Kaufman, at the table here to lead us. Please, take it away.
Thank you for that introduction there. You spared me from having to do it.
My pleasure.
Tonight's presentation will include an overview of the requirements embedded in our affordable housing law and regulations, and provide you with information on our current inventory and those units in the pipeline. We will also provide an update on the Crown MPDUs, which although under the county's affordable housing law are administered by the city. We will describe our recommendations to amend the existing program and examine different pricing scenarios not in our current regulations. Finally, we will offer a brief description of the administration and monitoring of the program, as diligent oversight is critical in ensuring that the units remain in the affordable stock and remain occupied by households at the targeted income range. Following our presentation, we look forward to your comments and questions. The city's Affordable Housing Ordinance was adopted by the Mayor and Council in November 2006, and it was followed by two amendments. One that reduced the qualifying income from 60% of area median income to 50%, and to redefine the area of the exemption of the, from the Old Town Central Business District to the Enterprise Zone as established in July of 2008. 15% of new residential development or redevelopment of 20 or more units must be set aside as affordable to eligible households between 50 and 120% of area median income, which for 2017 is $110,300. MPDUs are set aside for those earning between 50 and 80% of AMI, and workforce housing units for those earning between 80 and 120% of AMI.
Can I revise this slide a little bit? Because it's actually no less than 15% of any residential development.
That is correct.
Right? So, it's not a ceiling, it's a floor.
The minimum set aside, thank you. For rental units are offered solely as MPDUs. So by way of an example, 100 unit rental property would provide 15 MPDUs, whereas the ownership units are split evenly between MPDUs and workforce housing units. The control period begins with the first sale or lease and terminates absolutely after 30 years. Further, the unit shall be of the same appearance, use comparable exterior materials to the market rate units, and be generally dispersed throughout the development. The council may grant a waiver or adjustment of the requirements if the applicant suffers an undue economic hardship in fulfilling the requirements. The requirements do not apply in developments in any enterprise zone established pursuant to state law as of July 2008. It applies to the original enterprise zone only, as you know, the enterprise zone was expanded, this applies only to the original enterprise zone. The 2007 regulations established a $1 per unit fee which has not been adjusted, and staff is recommending that the per unit fee be raised, but we're not recommending a specific dollar amount. Upon a finding that MPDUs and workforce housing units are not affordable due to common ownership fees, the Mayor and Council may permit a fee to be paid in lieu to the Housing Initiative Fund. The buyout fee is to be calculated as the difference between the sales price of the unit and the actual cost of construction. This buyout fee applies only to homeownership units. Next is the current inventory and pipeline units. This map shows where the current MPDUs and workforce housing units are, both under the city's law and under the Montgomery County law. We currently have 388 rental MPDUs and workforce housing units, 47 for-sale townhomes and stacked condominiums, two-over-twos, and we've had three units resold since the program went into effect. In the pipeline, we have written the for-sale projects through the Johnson Annexation, they've been approved for 106 townhome units, which would require 16 MPDU and workforce housing units. And the property at 700 Quinns Orchard Boulevard, which is proposing 153 townhome units, would require 23 affordable units.
That's Quinns Orchard Road, right?
Yes, sorry. Quinns Orchard Road, good catch. So for the MPDUs at Crown, the annexation agreement required that 12.5% of the development be set aside as for-sale and rental MPDUs, which meant that at full build-out, we would have, we could have as many as 282 MPDU units. Of that, 80% would be multifamily and 20% would be single-family attached. Multifamilies are condominium, also include condominiums, the 20% single-family are two-over-twos as well. As you know, the council has approved two fee-in-lu's at Crown recently for the 23 high-rise condominiums. The Mayor and Council recently approved a buyout which would result in about $60,000 per unit, and 56 rental units in high-rise multifamily buildings located in Neighborhood As far as the MPDUs at Crown, we currently have 73 multifamily rental units at Cadence, those are high-rises, and 35 townhomes in two-over-twos. 26 were sold to eligible households based on our priority, and nine units were sold to the Housing Opportunities and Other Approved Nonprofits, as is permitted under the county So our recommendations to the Mayor and Council. First, we are requesting, we are recommending that the control period for multifamily rental units in new properties coming online be extended from 30 years to life of the property as rental housing. It would only be applicable to new units coming online, and it would guarantee longer-term affordability, which I know is important to the council.
That brings us in line with the county, correct?
The county's is 99 years, so yes.
I remember the original debate about that. I think you and I were the ones who wanted to see the 99 years.
Yeah. But I think it's important to note.
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but I, I remember a debate about ownership units.
Yes, ownership units.
I remember one about rental units.
Debate in the city?
Here at the dais. I remember us debating about ownership, because...
For the control period?
Yeah, for the control period. Because I sort of remember an argument being made, and perhaps I made the argument, that if you, if we make it, you know, the lifetime, a homeowner's gonna maybe have less incentive to keep the property up, whereas if it's, if it's 30 years, it gives them an incentive to keep it up, but either way, I just...
So I am not, we are not recommending that the homeownership control period be extended.
Right, okay.
Just for the rental.
Just for rental, yeah.
Yeah, we think there are lots of problems with the homeownership resales, as you know.
Yeah.
And that would just intensify that, that problem.
Okay, thank you.
So, second, to expand the type of projects covered. Currently, our law applies only to new construction or new, or redevelopment containing 20 or more units. We're recommending that the council agree to expand the type of development covered by the law to include conversions with 20 or more units. For example, from multifamily rental to ownership, or from commercial to residential. Staff is also recommending that the percentage always round up. That is what is required in rental. But in for-sale units, as I say here, if a for-sale development had 102 units, under our current law, they would only have to provide 15 MPDUs and workforce housing units. If we always round up, we would get the 16th unit, so we'd have an additional unit. Further, to require the unit type and width of MPDUs and workforce to be in proportion to the type and width of a project's market rate unit. For example, in a proposed townhouse community with 18 and 20-foot wide townhomes, we would expect that the MPDUs and workforce housing units be proportional to the number of 18 and 20-foot units through the entire project. Currently, it's the, we require that the appearance be the same, and that they use comparable exterior materials to the market rate units of the same type, sorry, same type and size. We are also recommending there be a change to the fee-in-lu that is currently required in the enterprise zone. As you know, the enterprise zone in Old Town is exempt from the requirements of the affordable housing law. Instead, a developer is required to pay a fee of $1 per unit for every unit constructed. This fee has never been adjusted. Staff recommends that the exemptions stay in effect, that at this time the exemption not be overturned, but that the per-unit fee be increased. A big problem for every jurisdiction are unaffordable common ownership fees, condo fees. As you know, and because we've had this discussion before and will continue to have this discussion, condominium fees and high-rise developments may well render the units unaffordable to low and moderate income buyers. There are no good options. We could require the builder to set the initial purchase price low enough to offset the high condominium fees. We could use Housing Initiative Funds to buy down the price of the unit, an initial sale or resale. I think that would be appropriate, because we are getting a boost to our Housing Initiative Fund because of the condo fee buyout. To use Housing Initiative Funds or CDBG funds to offer limited assistance with condominium fees or special assessments, or to limit the sales to households at higher incomes, that wasn't really an option at, under the Montgomery County program, but because we do have buyers at 80 to 120% of AMI, we could limit sales to that higher income population.
So that's a new eligibility criteria for ownership.
Yeah, right, to do it to the 80 to 120% of AMI strictly, which is our workforce housing units, because they're just not affordable to people below 80%. The pricing of the units. So, there are a few things that were not addressed in our regulations, one of which is how to price MPDUs in high-rise, where the cost of construction is higher than it is in our regular garden-style unit. You know, one proposal would be, which is modeled on what Montgomery County does, that the high-rise units be priced to be affordable to households at 70% of AMI, whereas our current rents are affordable to households at 60%. So if you look at this table, you'll see that the rents are higher, based on that higher formula. Pricing for housing with services for elderly residents. We have a growing population of households who will demand housing with services. This, again, is also not addressed in our regulations. These range of services include transportation, meals, housekeeping, assistance with activities of daily living, in addition to, you know, much higher staff ratios. The current affordability standard, which is either 25% of AMI, or 30% if utilities are included, are really not appropriate for assisted living and memory care units, where the household is paying almost nothing out of pocket. So, one proposal would be to assess the monthly fee at seven, between 70 and 75% of a household income. So if household income is $100,000 a year, then 75% of their income would go towards these, these costs. Independent living units are addressed in our regulations, but assisted living and memory care units are not, because they do not meet the definition of a dwelling unit.
Louise?
Yes?
Can you give us another scenario? I just want to, I feel like I understand this one a little bit better.
Sure. So, if you are in an assisted living facility, often all of your meals are provided for you. Your utilities are provided, transportation is provided, so activities of daily living is provided. There are a range of, of, there are a range of, you know, services that are provided in assisted living and in memory care that are not offered in regular rental units or in independent living. So for example...
But you're saying the MPDU requirement still exists there, so we, so we should come up with a different class of...
They only exist in the independent living units.
Only in independent...
They don't apply in assisted living and memory care units.
Thank you.
So the question is, should we also provide affordability?
Okay, thank you for addressing that.
It's a greater growing need.
There is a, definitely a growing need, and a growing interest in the development community as well, of course. So currently, our MPDUs are priced to be affordable to a household at 70% of AMI, these are for-sale prices. And workforce units are priced to be affordable to a household at 90% of AMI. So the table shows what are three-bedroom MPDU, so a three-bedroom townhouse, for example, would have sold for in 2006, and what it currently would be sold for in 2017. These price increases about 28% over the last 10 years, and they are reflective of the changes in area median income. So when AMI goes up, then the sales price goes up. That's true for the MPDUs and for the workforce sales. The Mayor and Council at the time wanted pricing that was based on what is affordable to a household, whereas Montgomery County's pricing, which as you know is considerably less than ours, is really based on what it costs to build a unit, not counting land costs. So, an MPDU at Crown, a three-bedroom townhouse MPDU at Crown, recently sold for $162,000. At Summit Hall Reserve, that same unit sold for $238,000. So as you can see, there's a huge difference between our pricing and the county pricing.
So, it's important, I think, at Crown and the annexation agreement, the policy we adopted was to use the county's affordable housing policy, because we didn't have an ordinance at the time.
That's correct.
And so, the, basically, the standards used were the county's standards. And then, the other development was Summit...
Summit Hall Reserve.
Summit Hall Reserve was after we developed our own affordable housing policy and administered it ourselves.
Correct.
So I think it's important for people to understand the distinction between those two. They certainly understand the disparity here can create some issues for us.
And it did create issues for Summit Hall Reserve when they were offering the MPDUs. They were offering MPDUs both at Crown and at Summit Hall Reserve at the same time. So it made selling those units at Summit Hall Reserve challenging both for the city and for the sales division. Administration and monitoring. So, of course, inclusion or zoning, affordable housing is dependent on a strong housing market, and it's important that we continue to look at local housing conditions when we're establishing pricing for a development. For example, the units at Summit Hall Reserve, the workforce housing units that were selling for $306,000, were only about $50,000 less than the units that they were selling on the market. So we always want to pay attention to what's happening in the for-sale, new construction housing market. We've certainly found that GAAP funds have been really important to our MPDU buyers, both at Crown and under the city's program. And we also learned how important monitoring is. We find that there's a lot of turnover at properties with MPDUs, so there's quite a bit of education that we have to do to the properties. We also have to ensure that they don't allow tenants whose incomes exceed our targeted populations from leasing the unit. So, it's important that on an annual basis, we monitor these units. So, to recap, staff is requesting that the 30-year control period for rental housing be extended to the life of the property as rental housing, and that any conversion from rental to homeownership, or from commercial to residential, be required to comply with the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Staff also recommends that for any calculation that results in a partial number, be required to round up to the higher whole number, and that MPDUs and workforce housing units be offered in proportion to the size and type of the overall unit count. Staff is also recommending that the council increase the per-unit fee paid by a developer in the enterprise zone, as we believe $1 a unit is much too low. Although staff is not proposing a change to the pricing formula for for-sale units this evening, the way we price our units, which is based on affordability rather than cost of construction, should be evaluated to ensure that it remains viable when there are fluctuations in the housing market, and as interest rates and other indices change over time. Under the city program, 12 units have been sold. I believe the development community would oppose any pricing adjustments that reflect the county law, but the disparity between the two pricing models is simply too vast. Finally, how to price condominiums so that they remain part of the MPDU mix of units?
Thank you, Louise.
Is that all?
Just put a few things on the table for us.
Yeah.
I, for the most part, I think you guys have done, I mean, I think you guys have done a terrific job. In terms, in terms of the recommendations, for the most part, I, I agree. I hadn't actually, before you guys brought it up, I hadn't thought of the conversions idea, so I'm glad you, you guys are on top of that, because there could be a time in Gaithersburg where we've been building a lot of apartments, where at some point the condo market heats up, and maybe there's some conversions, and maybe there's some opportunities. So, so I'm glad you guys thought about that. Terms of the per-unit fee, that, we're only talking in that case about the payment in lieu in the enterprise zone, correct? And I think, you know, a large part of that fee is, it's essentially an exemption. I mean, the fee is sort of a token at this point. I wouldn't want it to, I wouldn't want to set a fee so high, you know, obviously, you made it clear, you're not suggesting a level for the fee. And I can see some interesting, I mean, invaluable things we could do with the fee, where we could potentially use it to replenish our HIF, our Housing Initiative Fund. At the same time, I want to maintain our, the incentive that we have for, which is a small piece of the pie, but, but the incentive we have for redevelopment in Old Town. So whatever level we set, I want to be able to strike a balance, where maybe it gives us a little bit to contribute to HIF, but, but we also continue where our priority's been on revitalization of Old Town. For condo fees, man, that is a tough nut to crack. I, you know, I see a number of people I recognize as housing, affordable housing advocates in the audience. I, I'm hoping that when we get to testimony, someone's going to have some fabulous ideas about how we, how we address this condo fee issue, because it's really, it's really dogged us for a while, and, and so, and I don't know if we're going to get it or not, but anyway, who would like to be next? Mike?
Well, yes, so, thank you. You know, we did this about 10 years ago. We passed our ordinance about 10 years ago. We had nothing before that. City had built an enormous number of owner-occupied and multifamily rental occupied residential developments over the last 30 years, without any nod towards affordability in a county where affordability is a real problem, and in a city where it's becoming a problem as well. So, I think we, we did it at the right time. I think we used a number of models. We had a couple of developers that proffered a plan for their own development, so I think that's good. It's, and it's clearly time to revisit it, revisit this. I've talked about our, our policy, and a number of us have, two elected officials in other cities at the National League of Cities, everybody's interested in how we did this, and they want to know how well the implementation's been. So the biggest problem has been the delay in the building of the units that we actually more or less established the plan to do. So, now that they're finally being built, it's nice to see that we're increasing the inventory. So, the first question I had was about the enterprise zone. I was going to ask you if you've thought of a reasonable price for this buyout of affordable units in the, in the exempted zone. And then the other question, but related to the enterprise zone itself, is it's due to expire next year, is that right?
Next July.
Next July, okay. So, that incentive to build with an exemption in the enterprise zone, the incentive to build in a zone called the enterprise zone is going to evaporate. So, I kind of understand how we might want to think about that. I guess, I had proposed several years ago that we, that we sunset the exemption for the enterprise zone anyway, to try and encourage people to, to take advantage of the exemption. I don't think we've had a builder take advantage of the exemption at this point. I guess we could have in the next...
The Affordable Housing Exemption.
The Affordable Housing Exemption.
Archstone.
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 What about the new Fishman?
The new Fishman, are they, they'll be taking advantage of that as well?
We'll get 105 units, I think.
Alright.
$105, they build 105 units.
Okay. Alright, so, it's still a question, is what's a reasonable buyout? So, I'm in a, and I guess I'm asking, so, since a work session, I can ask the questions, right? So, what is a reasonable figure for, for buying out of that requirement in the enterprise?
Can I offer a slight corollary to that question? Which is, first, I understand that the Economic and Business Development Committee met on Friday and was discussing this very issue of the buyout amount. Now, they approached the issue... Now, they approached the issue from the perspective of economic development and not the perspective necessarily of other city priorities. But I'd be curious to know what the outcome of that discussion was. If anybody, you know, was there consensus at that meeting about a particular dollar figure? And then, secondly, I know staff is a little bit understandably hesitant to offer what they think, you know, is the right number as we saw in the background material for the session tonight. Maybe instead of asking you to tell us what you think is a reasonable number, maybe we could see, do you have a sense of what other jurisdictions that have these kinds of programs are charging for their buyout alternatives? Which might at least give us a starting point for the discussion without you feeling like you have to put your own opinion on it.
That's fair.
All right. The Economic and Business Development, as well as the Old Town Advisory Committee, both addressed this issue within the last couple of weeks. I would say that OTAC was a little bit more resolute in their opposition to any change in the rules as they are, meaning no increase in the fee and certainly no waiver of the exemption. They think it's critical, they think it's been critical for projects like Archstone, for the project we're currently working on at three fifteen East Diamond, and what they've heard anecdotally from at least one other property owner in Old Town who may be pursuing sale and redevelopment in the future and how important this waiver is for new development. The Economic Development Committee, and I know Lori Ann Sales is here who was present, so I don't want to mistake what the committee members thought, but they were a little bit less resolute. There was certainly concern about too much change to it and impacting negatively future development. But I wouldn't say they were as opposed and they certainly did not have a dollar figure in mind of what that fee could be. Frankly, for staff, we are still researching what other communities are doing and they're all over the board. It's, you know, from as low as a token figure like you've got here to an amount per square foot of developed space. We're just not up to the point where we have a number to recommend. We hope to soon. Economic Development, of course, is concerned about the bottom line and the performance for projects that wind up in front of us. Particularly in Old Town, we have seen some of these and we know how razor-thin margins really are. And that's not just hyperbole. We do want to see development here, but we don't want to scare away new projects. So, we want to be careful with our recommendation, if that's fair.
Okay, so, I guess there's general agreement that three hundred, three hundred and what, eighty-nine dollars or something is pretty much a token fee.
I think even we would agree, there's probably some room to increase that without scaring people and scaring development away.
And given the fact that we do have a successful development right on the edge of Old Town Hidden Creek in which they did, they weren't exempt from the affordable housing requirements. And on the other side, where Broadstone used to be, I'm trying to remember the name.
It's now called Seventeen Barkley, but it was Highland Square.
Right, Highland Square, okay. So, they also provided the number of affordable units for the inventory. So, that, you know, so, we know it's not, well, anyway. I think we need to move away from something more, move to something more meaningful than a token acknowledgement of this advantage. So, again, keep in mind that we do want to encourage some development in the city. So, I guess, and I'll finish up here. I, like all of the requirements or the suggestions, recommendations make a lot of sense. I'm glad that you, that we have something related to housing for senior living, especially the areas that hadn't been covered before, independent or assisted care, living and memory care. We know that the city's been approached already. We've approved one plan that, where that's a factor. So, I think clearly, there's a great need there. The challenge of dealing with the unaffordable common ownership fees is really a problem. And I think we've given us a couple of ways to look at this. So, we could use HIF or, I guess, are CDVG funds actually available to do this kind of buy down?
CDVG funds are available to help with condo fees, but only in the short term. So, we could provide assistance for three months if a household was struggling with paying their condo fees. We could pay the condo fees for three months entirely. But that doesn't address the long-term issue.
So, yeah, so, I mean, these solutions are really short-term.
Montgomery County has recently decided to use its HEF funds to buy down the price.
Buy down the price of the unit.
Yes. Montgomery County was like us and they were basically, we don't know what to do, let's try this.
And then, finally, the last question is, how do we deal with this disparity in the cost of creating the MPDU and workforce units, the ownership units in terms of what we came up with that we thought was reasonable at the time and may still be reasonable? And then, the county's approach, which is, it's an amazing bargain for those units and those homeowners. But we can certainly see the challenge that it has for developers. So, what other kind of formula are we looking at or might you be suggesting for this kind of?
Well, we met with one developer who, of course, you know, said that they lose money. Everybody loses money under the county formula regardless of what the county's position is. We think our formula is too generous. As you know, our formula and our law was passed in two thousand and six when we had a very strong housing market. There, you know, was a five-year period where we weren't, we didn't have a single homeownership unit available. I don't know what the right formula is, but if you agree that our pricing is too generous, then we will definitely come back to you with a formula that's somewhere between what we have and what the county has.
So, I guess the question is, how do we determine what's too generous and what's just right? So, given that we seem to have a pretty strong housing market again, that those losses between two thousand and six and now have basically been recouped and probably a considerable amount of equity has grown. So, anyway, that's our biggest challenge, I think, in how we deal with it, so, anyway.
So, before I go on, and you want to go next, right?
Sure.
Okay, I can see Ryan chomping, but he's ready to go. If we were to, rather than sort of call out numbers for that fee in lieu for the enterprise zone, if we were just to sort of, as guidance, say, well, we want something that's more meaningful but not discouraging of redevelopment in Old Town, would that be good enough guidance for you guys coming out of this?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it has, yeah, it has to be something along those lines because we don't have enough information yet from the research to throw out a specific number.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Ram. A number of questions. First, clarification, we were talking about the enterprise zone earlier. It's my understanding that even though the enterprise zone as a state designation for certain tax credits will expire, I guess, in a year, that we decoupled that expiration date from our own affordable housing exemption in Old Town. We just use the enterprise zone as a designation for the map so you can see where that zone is. So, even though that state tax credit benefit will expire next year, it does not mean that our exemption will expire next year.
Right.
So, I just wanted to clarify that. A couple of other questions. I noticed throughout the presentation, there was some references to revisiting pricing from sixty percent of AMI to seventy percent of AMI, for example, for high rises. And there were some other potential changes of pricing based on AMI. I just also wanted to clarify, that doesn't necessarily mean a change in eligibility, right? In other words, you don't have to be at seventy percent of AMI to be eligible for a high-rise MPDU. It's just that it will be priced at that point. You could still be lower than seventy percent and still be eligible.
We're not recommending a change in our targeted populations of fifty and eighty.
Right, so, it's really just a change in pricing, not a change in eligibility, a change in price point. Okay, and then, on the cost of services for, or the cost of units for senior living facilities that have additional services, I think you're absolutely on the right track. But I just want to caution as we go forward with that, to be careful about how we determine the parameters of what we're going to do. Because frankly, there's a wide range of products out there. And, you know, there's the Cadillac, you know, version of senior housing plus services. And then, there's sort of a standard version and there are other versions in between. And I would just want to be careful about setting the precedent that we're going to be, you know, creating a certain kind of subsidy for a certain kind of product, but not a subsidy for another kind of product. And I think we just need to be careful. I also think we need to be careful in the way that product may compare to other types of housing out there that may not necessarily be designed for seniors, but may be designed for other populations that want additional services tied into their housing. And how does that fit as well? So, I don't know how much you've thought, this is kind of really in the weeds of it as opposed to the big picture issue. As a big picture item, I absolutely agree with you, we need to do something here. But I just wanted to kind of throw that out as a caution because I could see, you know, there's so many different products out there and they continue to evolve. And five or 10 years from now, we may not recognize what kind of products we have today versus then. So, we need to be careful about that. Because we're going to essentially be subsidizing not only the housing itself, but the services surrounding the housing.
Derek, you're absolutely right, there's no one-size-fits-all at all in this. And even though both Rockville and Montgomery County have it in their regulations in some form, they are doing, you know, an alternative agreement for every one of these because the services range so differently.
So, I mean, when we get to the point of something more fine-print like regulations on something like this far down the road, you know, it might be a matter of trying to itemize, what are the kinds of services that we are looking at that, you know, will be included and covered and what won't? I don't know.
Yeah.
But again, I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar screen. Louise, you mentioned that of all the, of all the not-great options for dealing with condos, that using HIF funds to buy down the initial purchase price might be the least bad option, let's call it. I'm just trying to better understand how that actually will work in practice. In other words, a buyer will have to be eligible under our program based on their income, either as a workforce housing eligibility or MPDU eligibility, depending on how we design the program. And then, they would opt knowingly to purchase the unit at a lower price because of a buydown from the HIF. But then, they'd be stuck with whatever condo fees come down the road.
They would be responsible for the condo fees.
Okay.
And then, when they sell the unit.
Right.
Thirty years, hence, the Housing Initiative Fund gets paid back.
Okay, I'm just not convinced yet that that solves the problem.
Right.
It's better than nothing, but I'm just, I'm just not convinced that we don't still get into the same problem a couple of years down the road that we're worried about now. And I think that staff's memo was absolutely right when you said that the council prioritizes the creation of units. And so, we're all very interested in creative solutions to this intractable problem. But we also understand the reality and don't want to end up creating units that are going to get people stuck in that situation where we can't really do much about their condo fees as we've discussed at length already. So, I just wanted to kind of say, I understand that's the least bad option and I want to do something, but I'm not entirely convinced it's going to end up so great, so.
Can I, real quick, follow up on that? Do you have, do we have an idea of predicting the number of units like that that are going to be available over the next few years?
Condominiums?
Yeah.
I don't have any that I know of.
We could look into it, I don't know it.
Right now, the only, the only, the only project that's sort of on the radar for that right now is the one that's being built at Crown right now, right, behind the Harris Teeter.
There is speculation about future projects, but I am not aware of any other condominium projects proposed or even formally in the pipeline.
In the city, I mean, yes, Crown has another set of condos coming before the planning commission, August second. That would have the same concern, we would have the same concern about those.
Okay, just one more issue I wanted to raise. I also generally support this idea of making the size and appearance of units more proportional. But I think that kind of begs the question about revisiting detached, single-family homes. And I don't know what the right answer is here, but if we're saying that in a development, it's appropriate for not only there to be a certain proportion of numbers of units, but proportion of types of units, then I think we need to think about that. And I also think we need to think about not just the exteriors of the units. You know, I may be alone on this, but, you know, as written now, the regulations talk about having essentially identical or comparable exterior.
That's right.
But I don't know what that means in terms of, you know, in terms of interior amenities from unit to unit. Maybe that's not regulated at all right now.
No.
And, you know, I'm not just talking about, you know, one unit has a granite countertop and one unit has a Formica countertop or whatever. That's, that's not as much of an issue for me as other sort of larger questions about equity from unit to unit. So, I'm throwing that out there as well. I understand that, you know, developers, you know, do need to make the dollars work here. But at the same time, I don't want, I don't know that we've had this problem so far, but I don't want to set up a situation where we're basically inviting a future developer to build two units that look the same on the exterior, but look totally different on the inside and one is, you know, of much nicer quality than the other. And again, I'm not just talking about things like appliances, you know, whether it's a stainless steel fridge or a regular fridge, that doesn't concern me so much as bigger issues that might be going on inside the unit.
All right, Neil.
Okay, several things. First of all, going back to this intractable issue of condominiums and condo fees. I think we've had a meeting, I think, I see several people in the room that were in that meeting and talking about that. And the solution that was proposed, I thought, was fit our needs pretty well, which was basically say that because of condo fees that will escalate over time and make the affordable unit unaffordable, even if it starts out affordable, that allowing a buyout and using the HIF fund for other purposes specifically for updating and refurbishing our older garden-style apartments in the city. Looking at the numbers, we have just under two thousand affordable rental units in the city, according to the statistics that you folks were kind enough to generate over the last week. That's, you know, given that we only have about four hundred units, according to this presentation, that are affordable under the regulations, that means about eighty percent of our affordable units are simply affordable because that's what the market says. And I'd like to make sure that those don't deteriorate in quality over time. And HIF being used for that serves a great purpose. And just, you know, since there's no great solution to this condominium fee issue, then that would seem like a great way to deal with it. And looking around Gaithersburg, that would probably do our city some real good. One thing I'd like to consider as well is, I like to set goals and understand what we're aiming at here. We have just over ten thousand rental units in the city overall and about two thousand of them are affordable. I looked at the report that the county generated on what they offer as well. And, you know, we seem to have proportionately thirty percent more than our share of rental units proportionate to our population and affordable rental units proportionate to our population as well. And so, the question is, you know, do we want to structure this so that we maintain thirty percent more? Do we want that number that gap to close? Do we want that number to gap to close? I just don't know what's fair or what we're aiming for here. Clearly, there's a need for affordable units in the city, in the county. You know, I think there's a need for housing overall, and one of the reasons that we don't have enough affordable housing is that we're not allowing enough housing to be built, but most people don't like the crowding that comes with it, so that's a whole other, not very tractable issue. So anyway, I'd just like to know that we're understanding that we're tweaking these numbers up and down, and it's going to change some of these, and understand what, you know, if there's a reason to have a goal, what that goal ought to be.
Neil, can I speak to that question?
You're the mayor, you can say anything you want. And you're the chairman of the meeting.
I appreciate that. So we had sort of two goals, and Mike can back me up here. That it wasn't just about preserving a certain number of affordable units, although that's part of it. It was also about spreading geographic-wise throughout the city where the affordable units were at the time of the ordinance, and still to this day, I mean, the vast majority is in one part of town, and we'd like to see it spread more equitably through the city. And so there's sort of two goals, but it's not just about the total number of units.
I understand that completely, and I think that makes really good sense, it's a great policy.
Well, it's also about keeping our mix at about 50/50 ownership and rental, which is, I mean, that's been our part of the city's strategy for a while as well, so.
Okay.
It's just been.
So it's hard.
Not to flip it either way, which is to create a rental problem.
But that's a separate issue from affordability, right?
No, it is.
Right, okay.
But it plays into that.
But the other thing that I think we need to think about again is moving away from greenfields, because there aren't very many greenfields left, if any, I guess we can annex one or two, but that's going to be about it, is how to build an affordable housing policy in an era when we're moving toward redevelopment and densification perhaps, as opposed to greenfield development. And our policy seems to still be very much focused on, you build a development and how we're going to structure things, as opposed to repurposing or whatever. I'm just not sure how applicable it is, and I want to make sure that we're thinking in that direction, because I think there's going to be a whole lot more of that in the next 10 or 20 years than with greenfield development here.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it did apply, I mean, the policy does apply to redevelopment anyway. So, and that was how the affordable units were going to be residential dwellings were going to be distributed around the city through redevelopment, you know. But it also, more or less.
Depends where redevelopment occurs, though, right?
It does, it does, but it also, you know, by having it on the books as a requirement, it also gives the developer a sense of both the value of the land and perhaps stabilizing the value of the land in terms of, or the property that's going to be redeveloped. Because they're still going to have that requirement of providing at least 15% of the units.
But redevelopment is likely to be more focused on the older building stock, which is concentrated on the part of the city where there's already plenty of affordable housing, right? So again, I just think it needs to be thought through.
No, but there were, you know, even on the other side, on the western side of the city, in west of Tucson.
Kettlin, so we got three things coming up that are all considered redevelopment.
Those are redevelopment.
Blackfield.
Blackfield.
No, but even if you looked at Orchard Pond, which I think was over 700 units, when that was sold and a plan for redevelopment came in, then the affordable housing policy then applied to it.
I'm not saying it shouldn't, I just want to make sure that we've got it in mind.
I think it's a fair point.
That's mine. No, I think it's a fair point, but I'm just trying to respond to that and say, I think we've got that covered, and perhaps the only place where we don't have it covered is at Parkland, which came in as an annexation before there was an affordable housing policy. Even the Spectrum at Watkins Mill, the developer actually proffered greater than 15% affordable units in that development, so.
Edet.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your presentation. I pretty much was a lot of the same thoughts that I had. The only question I have really is about the pricing for the senior services. The proposal to assess fees at 70% to 75% of household income, I'm just curious how you got to that particular.
That's what Rockville does. So I looked at Rockville's law and thought, okay, well, this is a starting point, understanding that you can pay a much greater percentage of your income to your housing costs when all of these services are provided. Now, the developer may say, no, it should be 90%, you know, they really have no out-of-pocket costs. But based on the Rockville model, I thought 75% was a good starting point. Understanding that what we currently do, which is 25% and 30%, would never work.
How long do you happen to know, sorry to put you on the spot, but how long Rockville's had that in place?
They put it in place two years ago, but they don't have any, they, there's nothing yet.
It's early on, okay.
Yeah. It's not just that it's early on, but that a lot of the development in Rockville that has this kind of housing also has very steep entrance fees, and that's a whole nother issue, and that's why they haven't been able to enter into an agreement, because these entrance fees are unaffordable to anybody that we would be wanting to serve, even before they get into the building.
Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just wanted to apologize for my tardiness today. I tried to get here as fast as possible, but there's so many speed cameras around. That's just a joke, I stayed under the speed limit. You know, I looked through this slide presentation, and I apologize, I'll come back and look at the conversation later via YouTube, which is a fabulous feature that we have here in the city that the county only recently implemented. But just, you know, I agree with what I'm seeing on the slide presentation, but I kind of want to focus more where Neil was going with this. And Neil and I have had some conversations on the affordable housing, the philosophy of it. I know, Tom, you and I also had extensive conversations on the topic of, you know, I'll begin by saying I support the concept of affordable housing and generation of affordable housing. My personal view is that, you know, developers don't have a right to develop, and they have to work with the city to be able to develop at certain densities, for example, and that one of the social policies that we implement in furtherance of that is the affordable housing. I'm just not convinced that we're using the program the most effectively that it can be. And just let me explain why I say that, and this is just anecdotal by observation, is, you know, we're building a lot of large projects here in the city, high-end projects, very expensive projects. And I understand what my colleagues are saying about the important goal of spreading affordable housing around the city, but if we're only approving projects where the housing is $500,000, $800,000, a million dollars, you know, if we were to allow a buyout of some of those properties, or at least have the option of a buyout, of a substantial buyout, you know, something that as far as the developer is concerned would equate to them having to develop the property or provide money for it. Because my understanding, and I haven't really done the math on it, is the county's buyout for condos is lower than the cost to develop. So it's almost a gift to the developer to allow the buyout to occur. I'm talking about substantial payments that would be made into the HIF to use the funds better. So Neil was talking about, for example, retrofitting. As we move away from greenfields, we're moving more into redevelopment projects, and as he mentioned, you know, some of the housing stock on the certain parts of town are getting older, it might be right for some kind of partnership with the city to redevelop. Well, we need money to do that, and if the money is going into, is not there because we're, for lack of a better term, shoehorning affordable housing into higher-end areas that is not the most effective use of the program, you know, that's what I want to look at, is how we can most effectively use the funds. Condos is another great example, you know, we've all beat the horse to death here, you know, we were talking about the Crown, I think a lot of us were flummoxed at the, how you get around that quandary there. Well, I think in those situations, buyouts, substantial buyouts, that would feed into the Housing Initiative Fund to allow us better opportunities throughout the city to utilize those resources is the best way to go. You know, that's just my 30,000-foot view of the philosophy of affordable housing here in the city. And again, I support, I support the initiative, I support the thought behind it. I'm just concerned that the way we're currently going with it is not the best use of resources.
Well, now would be the time where we'd like to hear from the public on this topic. We ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes. State your name and address or neighborhood for the record. When your time's down to 30 seconds, it'll beep, the timer will beep and turn yellow, your time is up, it will beep and turn red. Please, have at it.
Thank you. My name is Tom Cowley. I reside at 14617 Deveraux Terrace and 20878 zip code. And I'm a volunteer with AIM and an affordable housing advocate, and I work with AIM in that capacity. So I'm here basically, it's a point to speak in favor of one of the recommendations that the staff has made, and that is changing the control period on your affordable rental Getting away from the 30-year to the life of property. I frankly tend to believe more in the specific, as the county has a 99-year term, but because life of the property is kind of interesting, and I think will present some problems for us as we proceed. But at any rate, I'd say you're fortunate. In 2005, I remember that Gaithersburg was a lot more like a developer's playground as opposed to having a real housing policy. And the dispersment of affordable housing to address Mr. Wu and Mr. Harris is really an important social challenge. We need to do that. There's been much talk about economic development here in Old Town. A lot of progress has been made, but frankly, we all know, you all know better than I, the concentration of affordable housing for decades has been over on this side, if you will, on the east side of the city. And without a policy that suggests a healthy dispersment of the affordable housing, it becomes a crisis. But I want to point out also that, while I think it makes good sense to change this control period, we know that what will happen, because if I understood and just listening here tonight, that this is only going to apply to new units that are coming on, it doesn't affect the rental units that are in existence. Is that true? So really, the 30-year change, or excuse me, the change to 30-year, it doesn't change anything, is it? Except trying to look way ahead? It seems to me what's likely to happen here is, as Neil Harris had said, you're likely to begin to see.
You have 30 seconds, keep going.
You're likely to begin to see some inclination to build more higher-priced condos, et cetera. And I think what happens then is that you have another crisis, and one that you're already trying to deal with, with condominiums, but that seems with the lack of land and affordable land, that's what's going to happen. And the older housing units that are rental units ultimately are going to be redeveloped. I would suggest that you give strong consideration to incorporating somehow a known-net loss policy.
Thank you, Tom. Who else would like to speak? Please, come on up.
Thank you very much. My name is Spence Limbacher. I live at 22 Russell Avenue, or 222 Russell Avenue, I'm part of Asbury Methodist Village. Let me, I'm going to read my statement.
Excuse me, hold on a second. If I can ask, please, any private conversations outside the room? Go ahead.
Okay.
I put you on, you didn't lose any time.
I didn't lose any time, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'm also a volunteer with AIM and the Affordable Housing advocacy work that they're doing, and I'm here to speak to the staff recommendation to require construction of the same size and type of MPDU's and workforce units as market-rate units in a development and setting aside units with larger square footage and larger exteriors as workforce units reserved for occupants with 80% to 120% AMI. Requiring the same size and type of construction of MPDU's and workforce housing in proportion to the market-rate units is reasonable and serves to make affordable housing indistinguishable from market-rate housing. This is a desirable outcome for developers renting or selling their units to two different income groups, and for residents who will have neighbors with different incomes than theirs. When a developer provides units of different sizes in a development, having larger units exclusively for market-rate occupants and smaller units only for affordable-rate occupants is a type, I feel this is a type of housing discrimination which staff rightly should avoid. For this reason, the staff recommendation that larger units with more square footage and size be set aside for higher-income occupants at the workforce housing AMI levels should not be approved by the council, as it is a type of housing discrimination. Larger families at the 50% to 70% AMI level should not be denied access to larger houses they need by virtual policy. We urge the council to retain a policy allowing housing of all sizes for every level of income within the full range of 50% to 120% AMI encompassed in the affordable housing policy. And when I lived in San Francisco for several years, I managed, helped integrate and manage a 400-unit housing co-op that had large units for higher-income people and for lower-income people. It had medium units for both, and it had smaller units for both. And we were able to build a much stronger community in this housing co-op because of that. So equity and fair housing policy that provides access to larger houses for larger families regardless of their income levels is what the council members should ensure. I and AIM urge the council to oppose a set aside of larger houses for only one income group in approving the requirement for developers to construct MPDU's and workforce housing units of the same type and same proportion to market-rate units in the development. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was good timing, right?
Good timing. Very good. Before, Linda, please come on up, but hold on a sec. Louise, is that, did I miss that? Are you guys proposing that?
If we have 18-foot and 20-foot.
Yes.
Is what we're recommending, then one of the suggestions was, since the workforce housing units are more expensive, that what we could do is have the developers sell those to the workforce housing units. They're all three bedrooms, it's just a little larger footprint.
Understood, okay. Linda, please.
All right. Hi, I am Linda Gore. I live at 60 Oak Shade Road in Gaithersburg, and I volunteer with Action in Montgomery on its Affordable Housing advocacy. I'm here to speak in favor of the staff recommendation to extend the requirement for affordable housing to properties undergoing a conversion from multifamily rental to ownership and from commercial to residential for the life of the property. As council and staff recognize, the city can't build its way out of the ongoing shortage of affordable housing with new construction, since there just isn't enough new residential construction to meet the demand. Thus, naturally occurring affordable units, often located in older buildings, are an endangered species, as landlords convert these units to ownership units to obtain higher returns from their property. As conversion of a rental housing unit to an owned unit is creating a new unit of owned housing, the city has every right to require some of these new converted units to be affordable units. The council would be right to adopt the staff recommendation that converted properties, including properties creating housing units in formal commercial space of 20 units or more, be required to provide affordable units for the life of the property. This is wise, equitable, and fair, since it treats landlords of existing properties that create new ownership units the same as landlords building new ownership units in new construction. On behalf of Action in Montgomery and as a Gaithersburg resident, I urge council to adopt the staff recommendation that properties converting I urge council to adopt the staff recommendation that properties converting, properties of 24, or 20 or more units converting from rental to ownership or from commercial to residential to be required to provide the same percentage of affordable housing units as currently required in new construction for the life of the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise, I have a question about that. I agree with the proposal for the conversion of units. In thinking about this, I've got to believe this is extraordinarily rare, but are there situations where a building converts from condo to rental? I mean, I, I, I'm wondering if that would ever happen. I mean, I know that it happens sometimes mid-construction, right? A developer plans a unit as condo, but they haven't actually sold any units yet, so it doesn't become an issue of ownership and ownership of common property. And in that case, it would be new construction anyway, so, you know, the rental requirements would apply.
Actually, I lived in an apartment complex that was half condominium and then half rental. And it hap, the rental happened after the unit was complete, the property was complete. So I think theoretically it would have, it could happen.
So theoretically, if we were to approve this kind of a regulation...
If the units aren't selling.
Would the conversion apply to those new rental units as well? Okay, great.
I'd also mention that we're undergoing a conversion from commercial to residential at the Hyatt House, to which this would apply.
And I have to say that the mayor and council have been very good about entering into agreements such as the one with the Hyatt House, but to have it embedded in our law is really the way to go.
But if a building was converted from rental to owner-occupied condominiums, then we're still faced with the same issue as we have with other condominiums of condos and things like that, making units unaffordable even if the basic price is affordable, right?
Well, that's true in the high rises, yes. That would be true.
That's until we figure out the answer to the condo fees.
Right, but it's the same issue, right?
Yeah.
It could be. It could be. I mean, I guess if it's a smaller building with 25 units and not a lot of amenities, and the condo fees might not be very high.
I mean, our current law, if a rental property converts to condominium, then of course those condominiums would be sold under our law.
They'd still have to comply with whatever it is. So, including a potential buyout. Whatever formula we came up with.
Okay, please, go right ahead.
I'm Dick Pavlin, treasurer and board member of AIM and a past resident of Gaithersburg, where I owned my own first home. My comments this evening are about the buyout structure of high common ownership fee units and the pricing of affordable rental units. The buyout allowed developers in lieu of providing affordable units where the high common ownership fees make the unit unaffordable was just exercised with Streetscape developers at Crown who have agreed to pay the city 1.4 million for 23 affordable units. AIM applauds the city for reaching this equitable buyout with Streetscape, which serves as the current example of what you can really request from a developer in terms of buyout. Staff is recommending that the basis for the buyout be the difference between the price of the unit and the cost of construction. We'd like to urge council to compare, ask the staff to compare that buyout basis with the 3% of total sales of all units in a project that the county uses as its basis for the buyout. Once the council has those comparisons, it can then make a decision as to what's best for the city. The pricing of affordable rental units in high-rise buildings is proposed by staff to be higher than the pricing of affordable rental units in garden-style apartments due to the cost of construction. Talking with Louise this afternoon, I said to her, what staff may be overlooking is the increased income from the greater number of units that you get, also known as density, when you build a high-rise building. So by looking only at the cost of the construction and not the revenue gained for the developer, applicants with 50% to 69% of AMI are going to be generally paying a lot more of their income for the affordable housing. So we would urge the council to maintain the 60% AMI for both garden-style and high-rise, recognizing that Gaithersburg is already charging higher rents than the county. My conclusion is that the city needs to strike a balance between making affordable housing affordable for the developer as well as affordable for the people who it was designed to serve. The $1 fee per unit of housing the city charges developers in the enterprise zone for being exempted from affordable housing is a good example of that being out of balance between the cities and the developers. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I want to just correct one thing that you said, Dick. The city doesn't charge anybody rent. It's the property owners that charge the rent.
I think you're right. Your rent. We knew what you meant.
And I'd also like to make a quick correction.
Are rents higher in the city than...
No. R and P rents are universally lower than Montgomery County's rents. And even if you were to increase the rents for high-rise rentals, they would still be lower than the counties. Also, the, when Dick said that the staff is recommending that the buyout be based on the difference between sales price and cost of construction, we're not recommending that. That's already in our law. That's what our law currently states. So just want to make those two clarification points.
Great, please.
Hi, I'm Raleigh Smith with the Gaithersburg Beloved Community Initiative at Asbury, and I'm with all those other guys, too. But I'm coming at it sort of from a different tact, and I kind of want to echo what Councilman Harris was getting at in terms of what's our aim. Where are we going with affordable housing here in, in Gaithersburg? And I've read through a lot of the documents, and you've been very, very good in giving me all this stuff and helping me try to understand what's going on. But I realize we really don't have a firm understanding of what our population, what our, what our needs are going to be, what our, what our population projections and our workforce projections are for here as to how, what kind of housing we need to have here. Now, there's a lot of that available in the comp plan, I realize, and I've read through that. But I don't think, I don't, and where it needs to be, too, related to, you know, workplace and that sort of thing. Obviously, to solve this problem that we all have, we're going to have to come up with some very creative suggestions, very creative ways of looking at housing. And a lot of it has to do around density. I mean, we, we will not be able to solve this problem without really looking at, at density and increasing the amount of density that's going to be here. And a lot of neighborhoods are not going to want that density unless they're involved in actually creating that, unless they see and are part of the decision-making as to actually build the kind of housing that they need, that their families need, and then their workforces need. So I'm just suggesting that we really look at developing a really solid housing plan for the area that is based on those projections and, and really involve the residents in the, in the development. Now, maybe you've done that. I just haven't seen it yet. But I would really urge that to happen. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Can I just, I just want to make a follow-up comment to that. I appreciate those comments a lot. And, you know, I would invite the affordable housing advocates here in the room and all of your friends who are affordable housing advocates to come to those public meetings and hearings where relatively dense projects are on the table, because it would be nice to hear from folks who have that perspective as well as neighbors who might be opposed to anything that looks denser than what they want. So I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion.
All right. Any, any follow-ups from the table here?
Just sounds like a good opportunity to bring up one of the ideas that Neil's been floating recently, which is trying to figure out, taking a step back just from affordable housing, but more of a question of where's the city going. And I think he's talking about a charrette process citywide, and that kind of piqued my interest. Maybe he doesn't want to talk about it. He's staring off into the...
I didn't hear a charrette process.
Yeah, this is over the years at some point.
What I've been talking about since, is actually exactly what you just said, Mike. It's more of a visioning process along with what Raleigh said. And he and I have discussed what happened in Sacramento, California over, over several years. And I chatted with the folks at DPZ recently as well. And I originally started talking about this as more of a planning process and irritated the folks in our planning department because that's really not what it is. But really, thinking about what, you know, what Gaithersburg is going to be like in 30 years and how to make sure that we get there from here. I know, I just finished reading Royce Hansen's book, Suburb, about planning in Montgomery County over the last 100 years. And I thought it was very illuminating that around 1960 plus or minus a few years, there was this vision of the year 2000 and the expectation there would be 5 million people living in the metropolitan area, which was actually amazingly good prediction. And that's where all the design, the wedges and corridors and the ag reserve ideas and all that came about. I think as a, as a municipality, actually, interestingly, in the book, it was clear that the municipalities weren't really on board with a lot of those plans, but I think it's worked out for the best. But anyway, I still think that I'm uncomfortable looking at each of these proposals to do a project in isolation on an ad hoc basis without knowing how it fits into the puzzle pieces. So that's what Councilman Wu was referring to and what I've been, been thinking about. So hopefully, plant some seeds here and decide if it's a good idea or not. And if it's a good idea, how we would go about it without causing civil war inside our city. Because it's not, because it's not that easy. Everybody's got their own ideas about where it's, where it needs to go.
You know, I think that's, it's easy to do an overall kind of approach and strategy if, if you have property owners and developers all on the same page. But everybody has their own mixed-use plan, because, I mean, everything we talk about now is mixed-use. And it doesn't matter which part of the city we're talking about it. There are some, certainly some, some planning priorities I think we have to look at. I think we've, we've kind of laid some of those out in our own strategic planning for the city in terms of the composition of housing of both owner-occupied and, and rental. You know, we're certainly still a city between a traditional suburban municipality that actually has planning and zoning authority unlike many, most of the other municipalities in the county and in the state, actually. So we're pretty fortunate to be able to have done that. And kind of the new urbanization of suburbia, which we're seeing in Crown and in Kentlands and Parklands and eventually, hopefully, even parts of the enterprise zone or Old Town, Lake Forest area as well. So I think the, the basic requirements that we have in our own affordable housing policy are a message to developers of how we expect their community, their planned development or community to fit into the rest of the city. And I think that, that certainly, it's still an issue for, for many families, growing families, who realize that their children aren't going to be able to live in a home that they own down the street or around the corner or another part of the city. And that's still a major issue for a lot of people. And it's unlikely that many of those people, those families will have their children living in the county just because of the way things are changing and growing. So we have to think about all of those things. And, and those are part, that's, that was certainly part of my motivation for bringing this up 12 years ago when I first brought it as a, as an agenda item for myself at my first council meeting. So I think that we still, it's great that we're able to revisit this and look at it in, in the broader perspective. It's certainly got us to a point where I think we can actually reflect on what we've been able to do and how we've dealt with some of the challenges, but where we can go from there. So it would be great to, but I like the idea of visioning this, but we also have to vision how, as part of that vision, we have to look at how we also incorporate Gaithers, incorporate ideas in which Gaithersburg is, is a place where people come to work and not just to live here. And, you know, it's certainly going to be a place where people live and then work elsewhere. So, but we're not a bedroom community. We haven't been for a long time. And I think the things that we do here in terms of talking about housing have to fit into that perspective of being a, you know, a major city in Maryland where we do have the ability to make our own decisions about how we grow and develop and who, who our residents are and that are going to be served by that. So.
Louise and Tom, do you feel guided?
Yes.
Okay.
Less question mark?
Could I, could I make one suggestion on this visioning process? And I think the best way to get something that's F Murrell Moore as solid is to name it. So I propose Gaithersburg 2050.
I'm not sure that's a long enough time horizon, but...
2075. If you talk about it.
Okay. So you guys feel guided. As I mentioned, early this evening, we have a work session next week about, about potentially taking on some of the HOA, or helping the HOAs with stormwater facilities. So please join us next week. And until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.